Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the joint meeting tonight with the Town Council and the Planning Commission. This is Tuesday, August 10th, 6:00 o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Denison.
Here.
Droz.
Here.
Lombardo. Schooler.
Here.
And Mayor Abel.
Here.
Planning Commissioners Henderson.
Here.
Napientet.
Here.
Stoker.
Here.
Trandam.
Here.
And Chair Thomas.
Here.
Thank you all for joining us online as well as here in person. We really appreciate you here and we're ready to hear your input. Before we do that, we have a general housing, uh, plan, housing and safety, open space elements going to be discussed by town staff and we'll have that presentation now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Uh, this evening being presented to you are the town's draft housing, safety and open space and conservation elements. As you are aware, the town most recently adopted its general plan in 2014. That was the first rewrite of the general plan since, um, 1996 following incorporation. It was a major undertaking by the town. Some of you recall a million dollars spent for, uh, the general plan and the associated environmental impact report that accompanied that project. Extensive outreach and community participation which led ultimately to that general plan adoption. The state mandates, uh, updates to certain elements of your general plan and that's the reason that these elements, draft elements are before the Town Council and Planning Commission this evening is for your dialogue and input prior to, uh, sending the housing element off to State HCD for their mandatory review. The general plan is a policy document. Um, when, when some people read the goals and the policies, the strategies, implementation strategies, they, some people may be somewhat bored by the topics and by the actual element themselves. Meaning individuals look for standards, regulations, ordinances that have a little bit more meaning that they can, that they can reach out in touch. These general plan elements are not those types of things. These general plans, elements set policy and then they give direction. And you've probably seen in your review of these elements, there are a number of different steps that the town has recommended to take over the next 12 to 36 months for how to implement the policies that are identified in the elements. Typically that's done through an ordinance. Um, as the council and the commissioner are aware, that development code is the primary tool for implementing, uh, your general plan and there are a number of amendments that need to be considered over the next several years in order for the town to, uh, stay in compliance. So again, the focus this evening is at the policy level within these elements. Um, the goals, the objectives and the policies that are laid out, also implementation strategies. Following tonight's meeting, uh, the housing element will go off to State Housing and Community Development for their review and the safety element has been scheduled for the State Board of Forestry Review on September 21st. That's what we're here to talk about. I also want to emphasize what we're not here to talk about, at least in terms of the Planning Commission and Town Council. Um, I think many individuals have seen the results or the summary of the results that came out of the community survey on short-term vacation rentals and the desire to see some amendments to those regulations. While the public is very welcome to make comments on that topic this evening, um, that is not a matter that's before either the Planning Commission or the Town Council for dialogue this evening. That is a completely separate issue from the policies contained within the housing element, um, the safety element, et cetera. The town had received some written comments regarding short-term vacation rentals in tonight's meeting. The town had also received comments on minimum single-family unit size. Um, that's regulated just as short-term vacation rentals are, minimum unit size is regulated in the development code. We fully anticipate Town Council providing direction to the Planning Commission and staff to undertake an evaluation of many regulations, um, over the next 12 to 36 months. Those will include short-term vacation rentals, those will include, uh, accessory dwelling units or ADUs that could include a discussion on minimum dwelling unit size, all of those types of standards that, um, come into effect typically through ordinances within your development code. So again, the public is more than welcome to comment on those issues and how they believe those issues affect the housing element, but those are not the topics of conversation for, um, policy discussion of the Town Council and Planning Commission this evening. The town contracted with Placeworks, um, for the update to these elements. Placeworks was also the firm that, um, performed the town's general plan update in 2014. Um, they're extremely knowledgeable on the community, uh, and the types of issues that we face, uh, in the provision of housing as well as other policy issues. So with that, I would like to turn it over, uh, to the Placeworks team this evening. They have a presentation, uh, to walk you through and then following, uh, the presentation, staff would suggest we go to public comment and after public comment, return back to the council and commission for dialogue with Placeworks and staff. That concludes our presentation. Be happy to answer your questions, um, after the presentation and public comment.
All right. Hi, my name is Lindsay Klein and I am with Placeworks. Um, thank you Shane for the, uh, introduction there. Um, so I am with Placeworks and I am also, um, trying to find Amy on the screen here, Amy Sinheimer, who is also with Placeworks and she is gonna, um, start us off with an update on the safety element work that we've done so far.
Hi, thank you Lindsay. Good evening, everyone. Uh, Amy Sinheimer with Placeworks. And as Shane mentioned, there are a couple different parts of your general plan that we've taken a look at here to prepare the drafts for this evening. Um, the safety element is the other main element that has been updated. I did want to mention that we also took a look at the conservation and open space element and to see if there were any updates needed based on state law or local conditions. And so, uh, the only edit that was made to that, open space and conservation element was to address the Western Joshua Tree's, uh, candidate status or listing as a candidate species, excuse me, with the, in US Fish and Wildlife Service, uh, under the Endangered Species Act. So there were no policy changes, uh, made to that element. So I want to focus a little more on what has happened with the safety element and the analysis that's gone into the updates there. Um, this is one of the other elements of the general plan in addition to the housing element that does have some required state review as, uh, Shane mentioned and that is by CAL FIRE and the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. It, and that is a somewhat recent change since the last time you updated your safety element. There's more review required now. And the safety element looks at natural and human caused disasters and other threats and, uh, make sure that the town is in compliance with state law and is also addressing the issues that are facing you. Uh, it looks at existing documents and plans that have already been prepared in order to get the most updated information as well as looking at the, the current laws. Next slide, please. So we took a look at the existing safety element and also at the San Bernardino County, um, multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan and that's a regional plan that looks at hazards for your region. Uh, we also prepared a vulnerability assessment and I'll go into the details of that a little more on the subsequent slide. That is, uh, an analysis that really focuses on, you know, what are the, the areas that you're most vulnerable in related to hazards and that is a required component of the safety element update now and that's also a recent change to state law. We did update and revise the background sections of the elements, so the technical sections, we updated the maps and developed, um, some new policies related to safety and resilience. Shane mentioned that the, the review has been happening with CAL FIRE and with the Department of Forestry and Fire Protection and other agencies can get involved, um, as necessary. Next slide, please. So the vulnerability assessment, as I mentioned, you know, really looks at how big a deal are different, um, potential impacts to different things in your community. So we look at, you know, the different potential harm that hazards could cause to things all the way from, you know, people to buildings, to the ecosystems and natural resources that occur in Yucca Valley, um, services that are crucial for the community and also economic assets. And you can see here that we rank these things in that vulnerability assessment. Next slide, please. And then this presents the sections that are in your draft safety element. It includes the multiple hazards, geologic, seismic, flood and fire, in addition to extreme weather, hazardous materials, and then disaster preparedness, response and recovery. And, um, evacuation mapping is also included in there. And you can see here some of the examples of what extreme weather includes and I'm guessing you've experienced a few of those out there in the desert. Uh, so that concludes our overview of the safety element. We are happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation, uh, related to the safety element draft. I'm gonna turn it back over to Lindsay.
All right. Thanks, Amy. Um, so I am gonna give a quick review of the housing element and the safety requirements for housing element. Um, the update review is existing and projected housing needs in the town and updates policies and programs to make sure the town is meeting the community's needs. The housing element must be approved by the State Department of Housing and Community Development and that's called HCD. Um, we're gonna talk about them a couple times tonight. Um, and HCD is requiring that the town adopt their housing element by October 15th. But there is a 120-day grace period to stay on an eight-year cycle. Um, so the benefit of the grace period is that the town can stay on the same timeline. Um, but the town just must adopt their housing element then within that 120-day grace period which sets them at, um, February 11th, 2022. So let's talk about what a housing element does not do. Um, it does not require that the town build all of the units allocated to the town by the state. Um, it does not require the, the town fund construction of housing. It does not require that the town automatically authorizes construction of housing and it does not require that the town changes their ordinances or zoning or it, it doesn't automatically change it. The town has to independently adopt that change. Um, so this table displays the regional housing allocation for the town. Um, the regional housing, uh, the regional housing allocation, uh, is a number of new units that must be planned for in each jurisdiction. Um, this number is set by the state and then passed down to SCAG and then SCAG disperses it out to all of the jurisdictions, um, that they have, um, jurisdiction over. Um, Yucca Valley's RENA is 749 units, meaning that the town will need to identify sites that it could accommodate 749 new units between the years of 2021 through 2029. So for context, in the last eight-year cycle, um, they required that the town plan for 930 units. Um, so this is actually less than last time and only 149 units were built in the past cycle, but the town had identified enough sites to accommodate all of those units. As you can see here, the AMI, um, for, uh, San Bernardino County, it, or the sites are split up by AMI or area meeting income and the AMI for San Bernardino County is $77,500 and comes in, uh, are updated annually, but we also have noted in the public draft of the housing element that you can view online, that the town has a lower median income than that countywide average. As you can see here, um, Yucca Valley is only allocated, been allocated 1% of all of the units in San Bernardino Counties that are needed to meet SCAG's regional housing On this slide, um, the public draft housing element indicates that the town will be able to accommodate all of these units. Um, as you can see, the town has enough sites available to provide 1,264 units and the RENA has only required that you accommodate 749 units, um, through to, uh, 2029. And this is the site inventory map of the sites that can accommodate units to meet the RENA. We have the zoomed in version of this map that we can display during the Q and A if desired, um, and there's, there's more detailed versions of the map also displayed in the public draft housing element. Um, but as you can kind of see from this map, overall sites are well distributed in the north and south of Highway 52 in a variety of zoning districts including the old town specific planned area. So in this update of the housing element, um, five programs that were in the old housing elements were removed mostly due to completion or them not being suitable at the time. Uh, many of the completed programs were addressed through the town's general plan update. Um, 11 programs were also added to comply with recent houses, housing legislation from the state. Um, we can delve into those programs, um, and how they relate to issues in Yucca Valley in the next few slides. Um, as you can see here, program 1-3 is new, um, and that is going to encourage a variety of housing types, including accessory dwelling units for a range of incomes in helpful sizes. Program 1-4 will allow emergency shelters in the industrial zone by right and review the operational standards for emergency shelters. Program 1-7 will, uh, allow residential care facilities serving seven or more people as a residential use subject to a site plan and design review. Um, program 1-8 will ensure supportive housing is allowed without a discretionary review in multifamily housing and mixed-use development. Um, program 1-9 will allow low-barrier navigation centers for homeless, um, in the town's zoning code. Program 1-10 will allow farm worker and employee housing in compliance with the Employee Housing Act. And program 2-1 will promote development in high resource areas and areas of concentrated poverty to increase the supply of affordable housing and we'll touch on what those areas are in a little bit. We have more new programs. Don't worry, just when you thought there wasn't enough. Um, program 2-6 is, um, going to require that ministerial review occurs for projects proposed in the overlay zone. Program 3-6 will enact a program for streamlining approval, an approval process for eligible affordable housing. Program 4-1 will monitor the list of subsidized housing and minimize convergence to market rate units. And program 5-3 will define and administer programs to affirmatively further fair housing. So you're probably wondering how we got to all of those changes and we can kind of delve into that here, um, as it, they pertain to Yucca Valley. So all of these uses that are listed on the screen here are required to be allowed by state law under certain circumstances, which is why, um, there are new programs in place to update the town's rules to comply with state law. So as you can see here, supportive housing is permanent residential housing linked to a range of support services that are designed to help residents maintain stable housing and lead fuller lives. So to encourage the development of more supportive housing and address increasing levels of homelessness statewide, the state assembly passed AD 2162 in 2018 which limits this questionnaire reveal for supportive housing projects. As you, uh, low barrier navigation center is the housing-first, low-barrier service enriched shelter group focused on moving people into permanent housing that provide temporary living, uh, temporary living facilities while case managers connect individuals experiencing homelessness to income, public benefits, health services, shelter and housing. And the primary intent of a low-barrier navigation center is to just reduce the barriers to entry into a temporary shelter for the chronically homeless. The farm worker or employee housing, um, bullet here, state law asserts that employee housing for six persons or less must be allowed in the same way that residential structures are allowed in zones allowing residential uses and that agricultural employee, employee housing for up to 12 units or 36 beds, um, is deemed, must be deemed an agricultural, agricultural use and be subject to the same regulations as any other agricultural use in the same zone. And this means that certain farm worker housing that meets the requirements of the law must be approved through a ministerial review process and they cannot be subject to a conditional use permit. The next slide here, um, we, the San Bernardino County Regional Housing Analysis of Impediments was completed in April of 2020. It's also called the Regional AI for simplicity and that was one of the key source documents for the Fair Housing Assessment section. The Regional AI used, uh, or used community engagement to get feedback from Yucca Valley residents about the housing issues in their community. So the Yucca Valley residents were primarily reported concern about the limited resources available to residents and accessibility issues. And the Fair Housing Assessment identified high resource areas and low resource areas, which we will review in the next few slides. So the high resource areas and low resource areas, um, Yucca Valley was assessed using HCD and, um, the 2021 California Tax Credit Committee data to identify areas of segregation, racial or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, disparities in access to opportunity and disproportionate housing needs, including displacement risk. Um, Yucca Valley has a mixture of high, moderate and low resource areas and there was one census tract that was identified as hard to count in 2021 due to the high vacancy rate. Um, there was also a potential reluctance to share true household data, there's limited internet service there, um, the number of households that are receiving public assistance is higher and there's a high unemployment rate. However, um, the 2020 map identified that census tract as a low resource area. So, um, as you can see, this is a map of the high resource, low, uh, moderate resource and low resource areas. Um, so to start with the high resource areas, um, as you can see, those areas are located, they are the, um, the blue and they're located primarily in the southern half of town, south of Highway 62 and they go west towards Morongo Valley and just south towards the town's And in the low resource areas, as you can see on the map, they are concentrated in central Yucca Valley bounded by, to the south, Highway 62 and the east by Highway 247. Um, and as you can see here, the factors that kind of go with what becomes, what identifies a low resource area is higher rates of poverty, unemployment, single-parent households, people with disabilities and cost burden for rental households. And we have typically seen also in this area, data indicating that there's lower rates of post-secondary school attainment, um, there's a, um, larger proximity to jobs or they're farther away and there's less diversity overall. So at this point in the process, um, this slide explains the next steps of the housing element update. Um, after this meeting, to receive input on the public draft, the town will then send the draft to the state, HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department for review and, um, we hope to be able to have the final draft ready for adoption in the fall. Um, that will depend on whether there's more, um, what are more reviews with HCD that's needed to arrive at a housing element that can be deemed to be in compliance with HCD. Um, if there's more than one review, um, we can extend this schedule as you can see on this slide. Um, and while the housing element update is required to be adopted by October 15th, as I mentioned earlier, that there is that 120-day grace period for the town to adopt the housing element and stay on that eight-year housing cycle. So at this time, um, I am going to turn it back over to Shane.
Thank you, Amy and Lindsay, for the presentation. Um, at this time, Mayor and Council and Chairman and Commission members, it would be appropriate for, uh, the council and commission to go to public comment, um, on this evening's agenda items and then coming back to the council and commission for discussion and questions.
Bring the lights up. All right. So we'll be having public comment. Uh, we would like public comment on this particular housing element, uh, presentation. Also, I'll be, uh, conducting public comments afterwards on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. So feel free, if there are any items that you want the council, uh, the planning commission, the staff to know about, I'll have another public comment section at the end of the meeting or towards the end of the meeting as well. Right now, I'm asking for public comments on, uh, items that were presented tonight. So we'll open it up. You will have three minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate behavior that which disrupts, disturbs or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting will resort in a forfeiture of your public comment privileges. The Town Council Planning Commission is prohibited by law to make comments or discussions on things that are not on the printed agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have several requests to speak. The first is from Josie Romero, followed by Mary Bouchong. And Bob, this first speaker has asked to be off camera.
Very good.
I'm gonna speak with.
On the afterwards? Okay. Okay, very good.
Same as me.
Same thing? Yeah.
Mary, I will speak later.
And Mary, you're gonna be after as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, both Marys? And Josie?
No, Josie, I'm speaking with Mayor Abel.
Okay, how about Sandy Hamlin?
Is this, is this just for open comment or?
Yeah, we'll do that a little bit later for the open comment. Is anyone, raise your hand if you'd like to speak on tonight's presentation or some clarification on what was, uh, presented on this particular part? And anyone online? Okay, well, thank you. Um, and like I said, we'll open back up to public comments because I know there's a lot of people wanting to, to share their voices with us when we're ready to hear those. So we'll bring it back to, uh, staff. Staff, any, uh, further additions?
No further additions at this time. It would be appropriate for the council and commission to discuss the goals, uh, policies as are presented in the elements. Any questions of Placeworks staff in terms of the language, um, at this point in time?
Okay, very good. Commissioners and council members, any questions on tonight's presentation? I know I have a few, but I'll wait. Okay, anyone, go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Um, I will go in the order that you guys presented. Um, if I can get my notes out. Maybe? Yeah. Oh, well. Um, in the safety element, we have a policy that discourages development in the floodplain, which is good. Um, but then in very high fire hazard severity zones, we just have additional measures that need to be done if people want to build there. Have you seen any jurisdictions start to actively discourage people from building in very high fire, uh, hazard severity zones because of the increased fire risk we're facing?
And that's for anyone from Placeworks? That question was.
Yeah.
All right.
Hi, I'm checking in with our safety element representative who's on the line. Um, so if let me know that that is done in various places throughout the state? Yes.
Okay. Uh, did we consider that at all here? I know we do have wildfires here, but they're not anywhere near as bad as they are in, in Northern California these days, but did, did we think about adding that at all?
We did not have that discussion at the staff and consultant level.
Okay. In the open space element, uh, policy 92 supports the development of renewable energy in the town. But we have town code section 9.46.20 that prohibits commercial solar and wind. That to me sort of contradicts each other. Um, I, I would like to see us maybe reconsider that, uh, code section at some point. This is just more of an observation than anything. And then, uh, and back to the housing element, uh, in the agenda packet we got tonight, there's a page that shows when the housing stock in the area was built and it jumped out to me that the biggest chunk of housing was built in the seventies and after 2014, housing development has basically stalled. Um, and that just sort of illustrates the problem to me that we have statewide, that we are just not building enough housing and have not for decades. Then on multifamily housing, the percent of cost for each unit of multifamily was 8.55% of the total cost and for a single family, it was 3.71. What is leading to that discrepancy between the cost to build a multifamily unit and a single-family unit? a single-family unit?
I can respond to that one. Essentially, there, when you, there are some different fees that apply to each unit. So overall, if you are building an apartment complex that has eight units, you're going to apply that fee eight different times to each unit. We did try to make the calculations so that it was compared at a unit-by-unit level, and you can see that that still does lead to an instance where the multifamily percent is still higher. And that is because multifamily does generally have other fees associated with it in terms of kind of utility connections and other, like hoops that they essentially have to jump through.
Okay. Because we've had this discussion in the Planning Commission, and Shane has mentioned that, speaking to builders, they have a hard time making multifamily projects pencil out, just cost-wise. And I think this illustrates some of it. Are there any programs from SCAG or the state to help builders bridge that gap? And I'm going on about this because, you know, I think we're going to hear a lot about rental housing when we go to public comment. And rental housing traditionally comes from multifamily units, and we've built very little. So I'm just sort of trying to find out if there's any way to make, you know, building multifamily units a little less painful.
I don't know about any programs that are available to, you know, bridge the funding gap, but we can definitely look into that.
Okay. And then, lastly, SB 9 is working its way through the legislature. I think it's probably likely to pass. And that's going to allow lot splits of single-family lots and then a duplex on each of the split lots. So each single-family lot could potentially have four dwelling units on it. Is that something that builders have talked about? Like, is that, is there an impediment to doing that now? Or is this sort of a solution in search of a problem? That's more for Shane, probably.
I can give you staff's limited perspective on the language. I think as the Council and Commissioner, where the state has been attempting to address housing issues for a number of years and multiple policy issues related to housing. There have been proposals, legislative proposals, through a number of prior sessions, which have been aimed at the elimination of the traditional single-family neighborhood in That legislation was not successful last year. Whether it will be successful in this cycle is unknown. But is it, is it going to change single-family neighborhoods if it's passed as currently written? Without question, it will change those characteristics. I'm sure that Amy and Lindsay are probably monitoring and having much more discussion on that legislation and are aware of how cities are reacting to it than town staff is. And then finally, my only other comment would be, if that legislation is successful, I would anticipate there being immediate litigation and lawsuits filed against that issue. There's been a number of large groups voicing opposition to that type of legislation in prior sessions, and we would anticipate, as in many cases of legislation in California, followed by immediate litigation. So Amy or Lindsay, I don't know if you have any additional comments that you can offer to the Council and the Commission on that legislation, which is going through Sacramento at this time?
Yeah. I think you covered a lot of it really well, but I'll just add that, based on some analysis that I've read that came out recently from the Turner Center, there are some exceptions to where this would apply. So it isn't expected to, you know, if it does pass and it holds, isn't expected to impact a super-large number of parcels in terms of the likelihood that the owner will take advantage of, you know, building that many new units. What that study said is that areas that have higher prices now and more development pressure, so generally coastal areas, are where it's more likely to pencil out to, you know, redevelop a lot in this way. Not that it wouldn't happen at all, but that's, that's the analysis that I've read. So it may not have, as, you know, generally, the cities and jurisdictions that I've talked with about it are apprehensive. So that's, that's one piece of analysis that I've read.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to, I'm sorry. Just want to indicate, we do have a caller online that would like to make public comments on this item this evening. So if someone is connected.
Garrett, can you unmute yourself? And you can say your question now.
Yep, I am, I'm muted now. Okay, all right. Thank you. Let's see. So my question is, the Speaker Lindsay, I believe, mentioned the previous renet assessment was something like 900 units, and then I missed when she said how many units got built. And I'm curious what the vacant capacity was determined last cycle and how did that fraction of, so the fraction of our previous needs assessment compared to the previously determined vacant lots? And then, not all of that need, I believe, was built. So how do those ratios compare? Because this time, it's determined that we have basically 750, but then there's essentially 1,500 units could be built on this inventory of vacant lots. So I'm curious just about those fractions from the previous cycle compared to this cycle. And second, I'm curious what consideration, if any, is given to the candidate listing of Joshua trees on this, on the existing vacant lots, the 1,500, I assume, that is basically ignored. But in reality, that would almost certainly put a damper on the fraction of those vacant lots that are actually developable. So I'm curious how that will play into the housing element. And that's it.
Thank you for the question.
Great question. I can take a stab at answering part of it. So the first thing that we do when we look at, luckily, we could, Placeworks was the one that updated the housing element last time. We had all the files saved from 2014. And the first thing we did was look at the amount of sites available. And I don't have the number up right now. It's a big Excel spreadsheet that I don't want to overload my computer with by opening, but it was more sites than last time. And you can check out the housing, the previous housing element to see exactly how many there were. We were able to preserve a lot of those sites. The real reason why sites would be removed was if they were developed between 2014 and today. And then there are extra laws from the state that have been passed since 2014 that make some sites no longer available for development, or they need to be, they need to change what their income sites were, the income was designated for those sites. Like, for example, if you have a site that was designated for a lower-income housing, and then it was on the previous two housing elements as a designated site for lower-income housing, it's no longer just guaranteed that it can be listed as lower-income housing in this cycle. There's a lot more things that go into that, but that's just kind of an example of why. We also looked at hazards on the sites, and that was a consideration. So if a site was impacted by hazards, we considered whether it should remain as a viable site. So it was things like that. So yeah, as you had said, we had planned for 930 sites last time, and only 149 units were built. And this time, the state is requiring that there be 400 or 749 units accommodated, and we have the sites available for that with the updated inventory.
Okay, so it seems like improvements will have to be made. If last time the need was 930 and we only got 150, so one-sixth of that, and now we have a need of 750 and only, and 1,500 vacant lots. Anyway, I'm hoping, for what it's worth, I support SB 9 and efforts to upzone, especially along the highway and in mixed-use commercial areas. And that's my link out.
Okay, thank you. I think Amy might have a little bit more insight, too. Amy, do you have anything?
Well, just, I was going to say that we didn't specifically look at the Joshua trees, but we do have, you know, a surplus of sites. So hopefully, that buffer would address, you know, where there are sites that maybe aren't as suitable for development related to the Joshua tree, if that's the case. And then also, to address what you just said, some of the new sites that weren't on the list last time are on there because of changes to the zoning and general plan since the previous housing element, including some mixed use that's now allowed. So that is a positive, but looks like you're looking for that to progress further.
Thank you very much. We're going to bring it back to the Commission and Council for questions. Yes, go right ahead.
Shane, this could be for you or for Lieutenant Walker. On the safety section, packet page 219, under the police, it talks about the crime prevention through environmental design and how the community and the Sheriff's Department can implement strategies that deter and create a safer streetscape. My question referenced the projects. How integrated is the Sheriff's Department with the Planning Department on either major projects, like an ALDI? Or does the developer reach out and ask for SIP-TED advice? And on the sheriff's side, is that conveyed through, like, one of the sheriff's specialists or someone within the Morongo Station?
So the typical process that the town uses for involvement of other departments or agencies is when a project comes in the door, we will send the plans for that project out to commenting agencies, including the Sheriff's Department. As you can imagine, since the Great Recession, there's not been a large number of new projects that have walked in the door. And for example, ALDI, the ALDI site, the Warren Vista Center or Rite Aid Center, was previously approved prior to the Great Recession. So those, that essential layout entitlement existed, and the town had limited capability in which to make those changes. But for new projects, especially commercial projects that walk in the door, those are sent out to the Sheriff's Department for their review and comments in terms of how those types of issues can be addressed.
And then, at the Sheriff's Department, do they have, like, a SIP-TED specialist that reviews those?
Generally, it would go through, I'm going to take a couple aisles of itself, we'll sit down collectively with the management team, have a Morongo station, to come up ideas and work collectively.
So the answer was that Sheriff's Department goes through the management team and discusses the project, and then if there's further concerns, it would go further up the chain or more evaluation?
Well, we would first address those concerns with the town and-
Yeah. Okay. And I'm just repeating it so people online can hear the response. I'm sorry.
And I would like to go back, and I want to make a few additional comments in regards to issues related to the Western Joshua Tree. The listing of the Western Joshua Tree, even when that listing becomes permanent, does not prohibit the development of the residential parcels that are identified in your housing element. The state, even as we sit here today, the state has means and methodologies for mitigating the impacts to the Western Joshua Tree, as the state has defined it at this time, because they have that authority, not the town. And if they make a permanent listing of the Western Joshua Tree, they will have additional programs in place. They even go so far, as the State Director from Fish and Wildlife wants to see a regional plan, a regional approach within the Morongo Basin, addressing the Western Joshua Tree, which actually makes it, if that plan becomes effective, makes it easier for developers to build on those properties, because they establish land banking processes, they establish financial mitigation banking processes, that once all of those clearances and that plan has been approved at the state level, it is a much easier process for developers to move through. So even though there may be, may be a permanent listing of the Western Joshua Tree at the state level, that in and of itself will not prohibit the development of those parcels. So I just wanted to add in that little bit of information. I think, as the Council is aware, the state required the town to implement the financial mitigation program, which are charged to those individuals that take actions which result in the quote-unquote "take" of the Western Joshua Tree. And if that becomes a permanent listing, there will be additional programs along those lines. But just because that listing occurs does not prohibit the development of those sites.
Any further questions? Yes?
Yeah, just a couple. Shane, this is for you. You sent out 5,000 contacts. I was kind of curious how many actually responded. How much of the participation from the community did we get?
We saw, and then I'll ask the town clerk for any additional comments. We saw one comment come back on short-term vacation rentals. We saw a comment come back on minimum unit size for single-family residential development. I believe the town clerk received a comment back on there's no rental housing available, and any other comments, Leslie. So there was a comment from a Ms. Simmons on short-term vacation rentals, which I had mentioned, and how those impact housing in the community. There was a written comment from Chuck regarding housing availability. There is no housing up here. Also, comments on homelessness received, and then on the minimum unit size in the single-family zone. So those are the comments that have been received, and you may hear other comments from those individuals that are here this evening.
So out of the 5,000, that's what you got back?
That is correct. I did not receive any additional comments back. So, and along those lines, we advertised on the radio station. We ran two ads daily in both English and Spanish for the last week. Were the ads put into the newspaper?
We had a paid ad in the newspaper, radio station ads, social media, town's website, our general press release distribution.
The 5,000 people, 5,000 individuals on the town's Constant Contact List, the Builders and Realtors Group, I believe, seven agencies, governmental agencies that provide some form of housing programs within the Morongo Basin, as well as, we sent it out to the local churches, because many of the churches are involved in providing some form of housing, be it emergency housing or other forms. So the town reached out very extensively in our outreach efforts for leading into this meeting this evening and public participation.
Okay, very interesting. And one question for the gals up there at Placeworks. I think you said Program H13 is new? Is that correct?
Let me go look back. Yeah, H13, or it's substantially revised, if not totally new.
Okay, because I'm seeing here we're, we're going to have to update our accessory dwelling unit regulations by the end of 2023, and we've got in here how, emergency shelters and single units in industrial zones? That's what they're wanting us to do now? Okay.
Yeah, those are both for the state, to comply with state law requirements on those two.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I had.
Very good. Any other members who seem to ask a few questions? Speak up if you do. I have a couple of questions. I understand that the supportive housing without review, that's affordable housing within the multi-housing and mixed-use areas, is that correct? I'm assuming without review means they're still reviewing the quality of the build and those types of things, but it can't be denied just because it's affordable housing. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it, supportive housing is a little- That's correct, and supportive housing is a little different than affordable housing. From what I understand, it's more related to, it's often paired with transitional housing in that it provides supportive services for those that have difficulty maintaining housing for long periods of time. But essentially, yes, that's correct. It would be a ministerial review, so it would still go through your Shane and your planning department and building review and all of that, but there just would be no chance to have some kind of subjective decision on whether it is approved.
Very good. And so supportive housing would be more of a transitional housing, like you mentioned, but it would be for people who perhaps are trying to, were trying to help with the homeless issue, homelessness issue, or coming out of rehab or drug addiction? Would that also be those that are coming out of, let's say, sexual offenders and so forth? So there's no regard to reviewing any of those?
Yeah, it's pretty, it's not super broad, but it includes, you know, any kind of housing that has services provided with it. So it could also include, you know, folks with disabilities who need certain support services, but yes, I think it would include all of those categories as well.
All right. And then also with the FEMA, I guess FEMA is supposed to update flood zone mapping and so forth every five years? And I've been told, I don't know, I don't, Planning Commission may know this better than I would, that we're behind and we haven't had updates done in the last five years? Can you verify or correct me on that?
I am not sure off the top of my head, but we can look into that.
Does any Planning Commissioner know about FEMA's flood zone mapping?
We'd have to go back and take a look at the dates on the maps. There have been some incremental updates the FEMA will send us when they've updated a map, but we'd want to go back and look at what those dates are.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then the other thing is, I think you've addressed this, and I probably know the answer, but with all these suggestions from the state, which we, I'm sure, support a whole lot of this, trying to find affordable housing for people, they are not, are they presently working on some type of funding elements to, like was mentioned before, trying to bridge the gap between building affordable housing or having mixed use? I like the housing projects that allow a variety of individuals to be able to purchase a condominium or an apartment or something like that within a development. Are they looking at funding or any additional funding programs?
Yeah, there are some funding programs that have come out in the last couple of years from the state for mostly affordable housing, but also a lot related to homelessness and veterans' housing. There, my understanding is that there is more funding that's part of this year's budget that would add to, there's been a lot of planning-related funding, which you may have heard about, to assist jurisdictions to plan for producing more housing. And my understanding is that some of the newer funding will be more focused on actually building projects. There also, I haven't looked this week, but there was a bill pending to help homeowners fund accessory dwelling units, and so that may still be in the legislature as well.
Just a couple additional staff comments. There are, it takes a number of different pieces to fall in place together for developing affordable housing. Now, when I use the term affordable housing, I'm talking about housing that is restricted by income category. Typically, that's a very specialized developer that works in that business, knows those financial resources that are out there and available to help in that process. They know their construction costs, their construction type, as well as how they manage their projects once they are built and developed. So you've got to have a knowledgeable, willing developer. You've got to have those financial resources that are out there, because it takes those financial resources to move a market-rate product into an affordable product. So there has to be a financial incentives out there from some source. Number three, you've got to have a piece of land. You've got to find the right piece of land and the development costs that fit into that pro forma for development of that site. Then, once you find that piece of land, you have to hope that you've got a willing seller, a willing seller that's willing to sell it at the reasonable price that fits into that pro forma in order to deliver that project. All of those things are very difficult to pull together for a specific project for affordability. I think for those of you that watched the town go through the process of bringing in the senior housing project, the Demosa Senior Village, the time and effort that that took, the multiple finance, different financial resources that it took to make that project happen. It's not an easy process to do. It takes experience, it takes expertise, and a person may go so far as to say, the sun and the moon and the stars all need to be aligned perfectly. So I just wanted to add in those comments. So, for the most part, cities, towns like Yucca Valley, we don't produce housing, we don't deliver housing. The state mandates that we, as you've heard tonight, we plan for housing and we prepare for housing. What other role do we have? Well, going back a number of years ago, it was very clearly identified, to make development work in Yucca Valley, you've got to have a good, solid general plan and a good land use plan that opens that door and is inviting. You've got to have good, easy-to-understand codes that staff can explain to developers, that developers can easily understand. That's your regulation framework. And in California, that's huge. And the town has spent an inordinate amount of time, maybe not inordinate, the town has spent the normal amount of time in that general plan update in 2014 that was accompanied by a development code update. Those tools are extremely important. The other area that towns like Yucca Valley need to focus on to support housing coming here, market-rate housing, is infrastructure. I think the council and the commissions have had significant discussions over the years about how infrastructure deficient we are, the financial difficulty, as well as technical difficulty we're going to have in the widening of Highway 62 through the town of Yucca Valley, let alone the infrastructure needs that exist on our major arterials, Onaga, Paxton, Akoma, Joshua Drive, Joshua Lane. Those infrastructure costs, when a developer has to deliver those with their project, that adds to the cost side. And in many scenarios up here, it may be more expensive to develop on Highway 62 than, for example, Highway 111 in the Low Desert, where that infrastructure's already been delivered. So, the town's role in terms of housing affordability and helping make things happen, remember, the private sector delivers housing. Our biggest, I guess our biggest role is to stay out of the way. How do you make that process work? A good general plan, a good development code, infrastructure development, and stay out of the way.
Very good. All right. Any other comments or questions? Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, Shane, I think this is for you, but on a packet, page 18, under the Housing Diversity Section Goals. First, I really appreciated a lot of these goals as they are laid out in the first few pages of it. But the one that I was curious about is Program H1-1, where it talks about incorporating different overlays, and it sounds like those were part of the general plan amendment that changed from 2014, and we're still looking to implement those overlays. So I'm just curious if that's something that maybe we could try to do quicker than another two years, since we're already seven years into that general plan version?
So, you are correct, those special areas exist within your adopted general plan. And if the council wanted to move forward, looking at those areas, that's something they could consider as part of their annual budget process. So that is correct.
Are those overlays, as they're incorporated, would that give more room for some multifamily affordable housing initiatives in a mixed-use environment?
I don't know that it creates more room, but it could help identify clearer standards for individuals to follow in the process.
And then, the second thing that stood out to me is on the next page, 19, regarding H1-3, which was the accessory dwelling unit, ADU thing. And it kind of piggybacks off of one of the emailed-in comments regarding the minimum home size at 725, and all of our multifamily things. I did kind of an informal talking to many of our local developers that have been building homes here for a long time. One of them had a 20-unit project that they had been working on for a number of years, going back maybe 10 years. And one of them had a 30-unit-plus project, and the cost to develop those was the same as you've already touched on, kind of made those projects not pencil out on a local development standard. But the use of ADUs at least allows somebody to, if we had a little bit smaller minimum home size, to have, in essence, a duplex on a single-family residential lot. Would that be accurate, without having to be a multifamily-zoned lot?
Well, I think those are tied into future policy discussion and code issues, and I don't think staff can sit here and use our crystal balls to what those policy discussions are going to be. So today, under state law, a property owner of a single-family residential zone site is allowed to have a primary dwelling unit and an accessory dwelling unit. Now, will some people call that a duplex? Some people may call that a duplex, some people may actually be opposed to that. I think if you look at the history of single-family zones, not just in California but across the country, they, number one, it's most people's largest investment that they ever make in their lives, number one. Number two, they didn't intend to live next to two families. Well, the state has now said that's okay. And that's the policy that's in place through state law. So I'm not sure if that answers your question or not.
Well, it just makes that a less costly development direction to satisfy the needs that were outlined by Placeworks tonight to have more housing units. And that's kind of the direction that, kind of my inform, like I said, I talked to five different guys that are building houses here, and that's what they're looking at pushing forward, to make more housing stock, where they could sell a house to a family and they could, that family could in turn, they could sell them, in essence, two houses on one lot, one for them to live in and one for them to rent out to another family. And that's just one way, because that doesn't really filter into this as much, because the number of sites we have to develop is 1,500, but in essence, we really could have more stock on less lots developed using that ADU strategy. And I just didn't notice that in Placeworks.
That's already in state law. So the town doesn't, while the town can update its ordinance, ADU to be consistent with state law, the state's already providing for that.
Granted, but I just didn't notice in Lindsay's, nowhere in the discussion, in the technical data that I read on the housing development, did it discuss the fact that we have 1,500 lots, but it didn't, I didn't see where ADUs came into play to satisfy some of that without using as much of the inventory of lots.
Amy or Lindsay, do you want to comment on HCD in the state and how they evaluate housing production per se based upon those comments?
Yeah, happy to. So, every year, the town turns in a report to the state on how much housing has been approved and developed in the last year. And any accessory dwelling units that have happened or are approved get counted, and that gets counted against your regional housing needs number. So, we did not choose to project accessory dwelling units as part of meeting arena in the housing element, and that was one, like you said, because you have a lot of sites that are already suitably zoned for a primary unit, and also because you don't have a really strong track record of accessory dwelling units so far. And that is something that's required in order to really count on that as part of your housing element projections. But every single accessory dwelling unit that you approve and build between now and 2029 will get counted towards your arena, so you're correct that that is another way that you can meet those numbers.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Rhodes?
I have one quick question. Is this working?
They'll get you.
Okay. Green light's on. Anyway, my question is on page, packet, page 286, open space and conservation and wildlife corridor evaluation areas. Do we work with any outside agencies, partner with them, or attempt to, let's say Mojave Desert Land Trust, to maybe try and connect our blue line streams with wildlife corridors, or if there's some way to do that? I don't know if that's addressed in any way.
So, the open space resource areas and wildlife corridors came into existence in the Yucca Valley General Plan with the 2014 update. The typical way that, let me back up, a majority of the lands that those two classifications fall on are privately-owned properties. The typical way in which cities address the balance between private property rights and the preservation of the open space and those resource areas, as well as the wildlife corridors, is through appropriate development standards. So within a wildlife corridor, you may own a five-acre parcel, but the town may enact a regulation that says you only get to fence within 150 feet of the residential structure and accessory buildings, and you're only allowed to disturb a maximum of 15% of the parcel. Now, I just pulled those numbers out of the air, those aren't real numbers. But that's how cities in similar situations to Yucca Valley implement the preservation of those wildlife corridors and those open space resources. So, it is not necessary to consider, in all circumstances, property acquisition, which you mentioned, an agency that specializes and focuses in property acquisition, for property preservation in its existing condition, and that's not the town's goals, as these are privately-held properties. It's the balance between those private property rights and those open space resources.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So we've had quite a bit of discussion. I appreciate the wonderful questions and insightful comments from the public. What would you like to see us do at this point, Shane? Do you have direction on?
Just a brief comment. This evening, Amy and Lindsay are, made their presentation, and they are looking for any feedback that would necessitate modification to the language within the goals, policies, or implementation strategies that the commission and the council have received this evening. If there is none identified, no need identified to make any changes, that's also the feedback that Amy and Lindsay are looking for, so that they know the draft document that we are forwarding to the HCD has received your review and essentially your acceptance. And I'm going to ask Amy to talk about that a little bit, because here's the process that goes forward. So we've been reviewing this at the staff level with Placeworks, going back and forth, making edits, modifications. We held the workshop, previous workshop, we've now come and held this joint meeting. Now we send it to the big bear in the sky, called State Housing and Community Development. I believe Amy and Lindsay, that they have 60 days to review it, and then they send it back to us with comments. What we're hoping for, and then I'll be quiet and let Amy talk, is they give us essentially preliminary approval. Maybe it's preliminary approval if you do the following things, so that we know, with Planning Commission and Town Council action, what we send back the second time is going to receive final approval from the state. So, Amy or Lindsay, if you would like to comment on that?
Yeah, happy to. I did want to mention, I don't know if this has already been conveyed to anyone on the dais, but there are a couple more questions from the public that came in after public comment was opened up the first time in the chat, so if you want to entertain those. But... But I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about the review process. So what Shane said is correct. The draft review period under statute is 60 days, and it does usually take the state that much time. So once we submit the draft to them, they'll review it, and then usually they'll set up a call with the town staff and us to go over their comments. And then hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to submit some draft revisions if they ask for anything to be clarified or updated. If there's enough time within that 60-day review, they may provide us with feedback on those draft revisions, but they may not. Recently, they've been extremely busy, and we have not been getting as much ability to get feedback during the 60-day review, as has happened sometimes in the past when they were not as busy and the housing element was not as complicated as it is this time. So there is a good chance that what will happen at the end of the 60 days is that the letter from the state will have a list of outstanding items that need to be addressed. And at that point, it's up to the town, and we will work with you to decide, you know, is the list substantial enough, or the issue substantial enough, that it makes sense to make more revisions and submit to the state for another 60-day review? That is an option, that you can do as many of those reviews as the town decides. Of course, we're on a schedule and a timeline, so, you know, ideally, we would either have one 60-day review or possibly two 60-day reviews, and within those timeframes, we would reach agreement with the state, basically, as Lindsay said earlier. And that is where we would go back and forth with them with these draft revisions, and they would issue a letter that says, we agree that once you make these draft revisions, then adopt your housing element and send it to us after it's adopted, that we'll be able to find it in compliance. So that's the process. We don't know for sure which way it'll go, and each jurisdiction gets a different reviewer, and each reviewer is a little bit different. So we will work with you to address whatever comes along, but we're optimistic that you'll definitely be able to meet that February deadline, if not get this adopted sooner.
Okay. And Amy and Lindsay, did you hear any comments or questions from the commissioners or the council members that you feel warrants any kind of modification with your current report?
I didn't hear anything that sounded like a direct edit or request for an edit to me. Lindsay, correct me if I'm wrong.
I have, no, I've been taking notes, and I think it's been a good discussion, but I think that so far, it doesn't sound like there's anything that warrants any changes to the housing element.
Okay. And staff, did you hear anything that would warrant a change? And legal counsel, did you hear anything from the discussions tonight that would, that maybe would have us make a policy draft change or public draft change?
No, I didn't hear anything that would require any changes to the draft documents.
Okay. And any commissioners had a change that they have in mind or would like to ask a question that might require a change to this? Is there anything specifically that you thought needed to be changed?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
Mayor, we do have one additional caller this evening, if you are inclined to reopen public comment.
I think we should definitely have as much public comment on this as possible. So callers or people who joined us online, we're a little bit late, you have a question?
Andrew Slocum, you can now speak, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hello. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak too. I have read over the draft housing element, and I noticed that there are quite a few sites that were identified as potential development sites that would help with these Rena numbers. What I didn't see, and excuse me if I missed it, but what was the plan on execution as the city is not a developer in the business of building houses? What will the process be in order to make this land available to qualified housing developers? Is there a timeline, or is it just open during this housing element? And I also was curious if any of this land fell under the State of California Surplus Land Act, which allows a city or municipality to use the land that they have in order to send it out to qualified affordable housing developers? If that would be a process, or if there's any insight on what the execution is for these Rena numbers to be hit?
Great question. Thank you.
Just very briefly, and then Amy or Lindsay can add any additional comments. The town's legal obligation is to have property zoned and available for the delivery of the housing units. Execution of that occurs primarily through the private sector. You can call them whatever name you want to give to them, developers, investors, who make those types of projects happen and who deliver those types of units. And no, there's no relationship with the Surplus Land Act, if I understand which act you're specifically referring to. Amy or Lindsay, any further comments on those questions?
Yeah, just to note, as Shane said, he's right that the private market takes over at a certain point, but we get the town as close as possible to being the friendly helping hand along the way. So there are programs in the updated housing element, for example, program 1-3 says that the town will promote the opportunity to develop affordable housing, including accessory dwelling units, and as a strategy to increase the supply of affordable housing and reduce displacement risk. In addition, program 1-5 says that the town will provide, or continue to provide, technical assistance to facilitate lot consolidation in the Old Town specific plan area to seek opportunities to streamline the approval process of housing. So there are other things as well, like they will continue, program 3-5, that will continue to distribute San Bernardino County lower and moderate income rental housing and homebuyer assistance program information. So they are supporting affordable housing in these different ways. In terms of timing, that is up to when the market is viable for the developer to decide they want to develop.
Very good. And Mr. Slocum, did you, if you're still on the line, did you have a specific area that you thought zoning should be perhaps changed or modified?
Specifically, no. I had looked at some of the underlying zoning, and it seems like it does fit for some of the areas they are, without going into an in-deeper scope of work to where we're spending time and money. I wanted to understand what the process was, whether it was going to be a request for proposals from private entities, and then we could lock into an agreement from there. And then from there, I would be able to have more insight. But from a preliminary view, I do feel like most of the underlying zoning is accurate for where they're located within the city.
Very good. Thank you again for your comments. Is there anyone else online that was wanting to comment?
Yes. Deborah Savitt, you can now speak, and you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you so much. I just was concerned a little bit, Shane, when you mentioned with the new housing developments, that if the CFW continues to regulate the Joshua trees, that that would all change. So that concerned me. I want to make sure that they're still being protected as a person that believes we need to protect our environment and our, you know, and that protects us as well. I think it is good news to have some low-cost housing. So many people have had to move out of the area here, or they can't afford the housing anymore, and they have a low income. So I'm glad to see that as well, and I'm glad that you're doing that. A lot of it's due to the short-term vacation rentals, raising the rates of the houses, now the cost of the houses. So I truly hope that they will be affordable for people when they come in. But how do we balance development with protecting nature? That's what I'm asking. So I'm hoping that you do, you know, select the right type of property where you can protect the trees, or reach out to people that if they have to be moved, they know how to do it, they know that the trees need to be watered, and all of that. So it's quite a balance to do the two, but maybe you could make it open to public comment, you know, that we would see where you're planning on putting these housing projects so as a community, we could be part of that decision-making process. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Very good. And that is our policy. If we have a project that's coming forward, be plenty of opportunities for public comments during the planning stages as well. And then also with Mr. Slocum's comments, I appreciate it. Just rest assured, if we had an affordable housing project, or we had someone who was looking at multiple housing alternatives and so forth, and the zoning didn't quite fit that particular parcel or land, we would definitely be working with them to see if that's a viable solution in changing that. But for the most part, I do agree with you. Our zoning is accurate as far as our needs and the percentages of commercial versus mixed-use and residential is the right proportion at this time, so.
Just one additional comment, Mayor. Staff did not say that the protection level changes. What staff indicated on the Western Joshua tree is that those protections don't prohibit development, that the state, even as you see today, enacts programs that allows development to move forward through the payment of mitigation fees, both residential and then the state is in terms of the town's permits, and the state has different programs for commercial development. So again, staff did not state the protection would change, but that designation at the state level does not preclude development. And then finally, in terms of, and I think the mayor already commented on this, in terms of available sites for development, density, different types of housing, all of that information has been available. It's both in the current town's general plan land use map, as well as zoning map, as well as the drafts that have been presented tonight for the Town Council and Planning Commission. That concludes the staff comments, Mayor.
All right. I believe we have consensus that there were no modifications and changes. Do you need a motion?
No, sir, we do not need. The consensus has been provided. I just want to thank Amy and Lindsay this evening for their presentations and their hard work, and greatly appreciate their effort this evening. The public comment section that the mayor and council and the planning commission are going into are not related to the elements this evening. So again, Amy and Lindsay and your team, thank you very much tonight.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right. Well, thank you. That ends that discussion. As I promised, we'll open up for public comments. Please take the advantage of the public speaking privileges that you have, and feel free to come up. Again, you'll have three minutes. So the Town Council Planning Commission takes this time to consider your comments on items of concern which are not on the agenda. When you are called to speak, please state your name and community of residence. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Inappropriate behavior which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting will result in a forfeiture of your public speaking privileges. The Town Council Planning Commission are prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not on the printed agenda. So, Madam Clerk, we'll go back to that list, and then if you didn't fill out a form, we'll give you an opportunity to speak as well.
Okay, so we have a list, or a request to speak by Josie Romero, who'd like to speak, and that will be followed by Mary Bouchon. And Bob, Josie would like to not be on camera.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. And, you know, my concern is the STRs. I wasn't really clear on exactly what this is, so I apologize about that. But it kind of ties in a little bit with the Planning Commission. You know, we have an STR that is behind our house, and when our trees, you know, deciduous trees lose their leaves, they can look right into our backyard. And we've came like three times when you guys have had the STRs. And I wanted to put up a barrier nine and a half feet. That's exactly how ridiculous this thing would be. And I know with the town, if you have a six-foot fence, you don't need a permit. Well, if I block and get my privacy back, it's, I'm going to have to submit plans, get a permit from the Planning Commission, which I don't feel like that's fair, because I was already done. I didn't have this when I had a regular neighborhood. I didn't have that kind of problem. And I was kind of, you know, taken aback. We've been here basically three times in less than a year, and really, nothing's been done. The last couple times, people have said, we'll look into it, and it's kind of stagnant. Nothing's been really said about anything. And I know I'm not the only person that's having this problem. And I just wish that something would be done, you know, about it and for it, even, you know, and I'm not saying, you know, last time we had people that were going to lose our house if they didn't have renters. We're not talking about renting out a room. We're talking about a party house, and we're talking about a neighborhood that you really can't enjoy like we did a year ago. And also, it's quite concerning to have people in and out. And there's even a person in town, five STRs on one street. I mean, that's pretty silly. And it's sad for that person. And my neighborhood, every house that's being sold is being, coming an STR with no backup. You know, I feel like as a resident of this town, that we should, the town should have our back. And I really don't feel that way. And I think as City Council and Planning Commission, that you guys have a legacy, years and years. What you do today affects people years and years from now, and our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, and how our town is going to be. Are we going to be a town? Are we going to be an STR? Are we going to be just, you know, a tourist place? And I don't think a lot of people would agree with all that, from what we've become, and that we don't really have kind of any plans. I don't think there's a cap, but I'm not sure. You know, you really can't get these answers. And I just think there should have been more thought into this. It's like putting the genie back in the bottle now. And I agree with people, oh, sorry, people's rights, it's property owners, but us too. Thank you.
Pretty much. Appreciate it.
So next, we have Mary Bouchon, followed by Mary Botcher.
Oh, okay. I thought you were just about to pronounce my name. I'm Botcher.
Yeah, either one.
Come on up. You're here.
You're here.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Mary Botcher.
There you go. We won't start the clock until you get ready.
Well, first of all, does anybody know how much a piece of plywood costs right now? Nobody?
Yeah, quite a lot.
$61.
Wow.
I don't see that rebuilding now is going to give us affordable housing. I think our problem is the Airbnbs, and I know we're not supposed to talk about that today, but if we were able to put some kind of limit on the Airbnbs, then there would be a lot less, you know, rentals is going to that. There's, we don't have any kind of, to my knowledge, we don't have any kind of habitat for humanity up here. My husband's a contractor. He could build his own stuff. But a year ago, a piece of plywood cost $8. Now it's $61. I lost my train of thought. I always do. I still haven't been able to find a place to live, and I'm just staying put. My, in looking for a house, rentals are 50 to 80% higher than they were two years ago. And I think it's just people trying to make the most out of it, and I don't know how to fix this. But I do believe that putting a limit on the short-term rentals is going to benefit all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, you can speak on any item that's not on the agenda, so everything's a fair game.
Mary Bouchon, followed by Sandy Hamlin.
Mary Bouchon, I live in Yucca Valley. And I'm also talking about the short-term vacation rentals, and this is probably a little bit reiteration of what has already been said. I'm not opposed to them, but I also feel that they need to be limited, especially as to the density within a neighborhood. I'm a social worker in the community, and I have families that want to take in children, and they are not able to find rental units here in the community. Other people have been given eviction notices and had to leave within a certain time, and then those houses were converted into short-term vacation rentals, and those people had
And those people had to move out of the community because there were no rental units available. Last week in the paper, there were no rental units available. Affordable housing rentals, when I've called them, they have no rental units available. And so, it really has become and is gonna explode here as people once again turn them in. And I think, you know, whether the permitting process needs to be really looked at, this is a big issue, especially for a lot of our service workers, our waitresses, people, our haircutters, people that don't make a lot of money. If they can't afford to live in the community, they can't afford to work here and drive here. Desert Hot Springs is still a ways away, and so is Wonder Valley. Additionally, when there's too many short-term vacation rentals in one neighborhood, it reduces the cohesion of the neighborhood. You don't know who belongs and who doesn't. And a lot of the occupants are from outside the area, they're not aware of our night sky ordinances, and they turn on all the lights available to them. We have literally walked across from the Airbnb in our neighborhood, and our shadows shine up over the mountain behind us, because they're scared of our coyotes, scared of our whatever, and they have to put every light on. And then they don't abide by our neighborhood policy of keeping noise down. And so, they're very annoying, too. And so, a limit, I think a neighborhood can handle about one, but every other house, it just, it will in turn destroy our community. And so, I just ask you, I know not at this meeting, but please, look into this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Hamlin, then Sharon Ellis.
Hi, Sandy Hamlin, and I live in Yucca Valley, Western Hills. I came here nine months ago and spoke at your planning commission about STRs. Nothing's changed since then. We patrol our neighborhood on the street that I live fairly closely, not walking my dogs, and there's a car going up and down with three people in it. It's a realtor. She has a foreign investor in her car, who through a translator tells me that he just bought the three houses up the street from us. And the reason is because he's turning them all into short-term rentals. He's in the process of renovation. And the reali, and I said to him, "You know, this is a neighborhood." And he said, "Do the realtor..." Well, it's so easy to get a permanent here, and I can make a lot of money. Okay, so, I don't understand why this continues. I mean, it's great if you own two or three of them, but it's not so great if three or four of them live next door to you. You know, that's just not a quality of life issue that any of us want to experience. You keep hearing about this. You hear about this all the time, and nothing changes. Put a moratorium on these things until you can work out the rules. I understand that these things were done about four years ago. So, consequently, you can't not approve them if they meet the city guidelines. I understand that. So, you need to change those guidelines. You can't have ten in a neighborhood. That's not right. You know, those are commercial properties, and like what the prior person just said, the lights are blazing, they're on all night. There's no code enforcement on the weekend. Your neighborhood people are the ones doing code enforcement. I don't feel good about calling the police officers at ten o'clock at night because the guy up the road has an Airbnb, and everybody's out there screaming and yelling. That's not good use of your police. You know, and I say that as the mother of a police officer. The point is, you gotta fix these regulations, and until you fix them, stop approving them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Ellis, and then Deborah Douglas.
Hi, I'm Sharon, I live in Western Hills. I'm also wanting to make a comment about short-term vacation rentals, because I have one right next door to me. It's a house that was, I live in a house that was built in 1961, a very modest mid-century house, and the house next door to me was also of that same era, but someone who moved in built a huge addition onto that. This was many years ago. Since then, it's gone through different owners, and I just turned, I just found out this morning that the guy who owns it now, who I have yet to meet because it's managed by a management company, it's going to be a short-term vacation rental. From what I can figure out, there may be like twenty-five people and twenty-five cars allowed to be at this house right next door to me at any given time. I'm just appalled. I just, you know, the whole thing makes me cry, I don't know what to do about it. I moved here from Los Angeles to escape this sort of thing. And one thing that upsets me is, I learned this, and also, at the same time, there is no recourse for me. I can't oppose it, I can't do, like, when I lived in Los Angeles, if someone was building an addition onto their house, they'd post a notice, and everybody who lived in the neighborhood who saw the notice was allowed to go to file something, to talk to somebody, to file a complaint, or to give a reason why they should not be able to build something onto their house. Here, there's nothing. Like I said, I didn't even know until this morning. And anyway, I mean, this house could accommodate two different families, because it's basically a duplex. It could accommodate a lot of kids, because the one house is huge, and I would rather see, you know, fifteen children there than a bunch of big adults screaming and playing music. So, anyway, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
And Deborah Douglas, please.
Hi, Deborah Douglas, Joshua Tree, resident of the Morongo Basin since 94. I don't want to reiterate what some of my co-community members have said. I just want, I wanted to be here tonight because Placeworks is also a consultant for the county. I hope that we're coordinating whatever we do with regard to housing element and how we do Airbnbs here with the county. I heard what Mr. Stoker was talking about, about accessory dwelling units. I would be afraid that those don't become a way to increase housing here. There'll be a way to increase Airbnbs, but maybe there's some creative ways to incorporate Airbnbs being good neighbors with regards to lighting and density and noise and all of that. I think that they're here to stay, and most of us like using them. There are solutions across the nation, if anybody has a chance to look. There's a lot of good information, state to state and community by community. I think that there are some solutions out there. We need to really look at them and not just let it happen, because public officials are public servants, and you guys are referees for us. And I think you've heard the community tonight, and I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all our cards, but that doesn't mean you can't come up and speak. So, if you'd like to speak, just raise your hand, come on up. Thank you, come on up, give us your name and place of residence, and you'll have three And this is a great opportunity to come and speak, because you have both the planning commission and the council, and one's a shot, so it saves you time.
It is wonderful. Hi, I'm Sandy Dell. I'm just listening to some of the things back there, and one that came up is that there is no code enforcement on the weekend. And over and over, we've talked about that, and the question is why? We have one code enforcement, I understand, right? Just one code enforcement person, maybe a substitute or something? And why is she not working Thursday through Monday, when the code enforcement needs to be taken care of? That would be, that's my comment, my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Great, we'll bring it back. Staff, do you have any input or updates for us?
No, sir, I think that it's clearly understood that the results of the survey, as well as additional comments that have come to the town, will necessitate further policy discussion of many of the issues that were identified this evening. Again, those are not before the commission or the council tonight, but at the staff level, we do anticipate direction from the town council late this summer slash this fall in terms of staff and planning commission review of a number of different ordinances. The town council has also talked about code enforcement issues, and code enforcement issues not just related to short-term vacation rental issues alone, but the overall program. So, I think the council has made it clear that those issues are going to be coming forward, even though they're not discussed tonight, but the council will be addressing those and giving direction in the very near future. On behalf of staff, we just want to say thank you to the council and commission, and again, to the Placeworks staff, as well as the public comments and testimony. All of those comments this evening are very important in the formation of a comprehensive, well-rounded housing element, delivering housing programs and policies for the future of this community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do appreciate everyone being here tonight, sitting in those hard chairs for an hour and forty minutes, to be able to come up and speak to us for three minutes, speaks volumes about how passionate you are. And a lot of you have really taken the time to really think about those issues and how they impact not only yourselves but others. If there are no other comments or questions, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Seeing so, we are adjourned.